I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Highland Park, Illinois, November 10th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Center.
Present.
Councilmember Brockman.
Here.
Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Tapia.
Present.
Councilmember Littleware.
Here.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Here.
Mayor Rotaring.
Here. We have a quorum. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council held October 20, 2025?
So moved. Second.
Any comments, amendments, or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amendments are approved. May I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the warrant list? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center.
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia.
Aye.
Councilmember Littleware.
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Aye.
Mayor Rotaring.
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. The warrant list is approved. Our next item is the report of the mayor. I have no appointments this evening. I have no proclamations this evening. I do have a few things I'd like to discuss this evening. Excuse me. Tonight, as the federal government shutdown continues into its second month, many of our neighbors are contending with the challenge of missed paychecks or lack of funds for SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. We also continue to feel the pain of our immigrant neighbors who are grappling with increased stress and anxiety as increased federal immigration enforcement activity continues throughout our area. Tonight, we'd like to draw attention to two important resources on our website that provide critical information to the community about each of these important topics. If your family is impacted by the federal government shutdown, there are local resources here to help bridge the gap. Whether you are in need of emergency financial, utility, or food support, we'd like to highlight three of those resources. No one should go without food or warmth in our community. First, Moraine Township offers a number of ongoing and crisis support programs for township residents in need. Visitors to the Moraine Township Food Pantry receive produce, dairy, meat, bread, and shelf-stable food. SNAP recipients also receive household goods and personal care products. Moraine Township also administers emergency assistance and general assistance programs which provide financial support to qualified individuals. The township's caseworker, Linda Contreras, can help people in need navigate various programs and find the right fit for their needs. Please call the township if you need assistance or if you would like to donate or support them at 847-432-3240, or visit moraintownship.org. West Deerfield Township is available to support township residents with critical support during times of need. So Moraine and West Deerfield both serve different parts of our community. The Food Pantry offers a choice-based experience of grocery and personal care items, including distribution of gift cards when available. The Township also administers a general financial assistance program and can connect residents with other resources based on their unique needs. Call West Deerfield Township at 847-945-0614, or visit westdeerfieldtownship.org. Third, 211 Lake County's helpline is available 24/7 to help anyone in need. Excuse me. The helpline is free and confidential and is available in over 150 languages. 211 connects people to trusted local services such as food, housing, health care, and utility assistance. As I mentioned, for those of us who are fortunate to have the resources to help strengthen these vital organizations, we encourage you to do so. Helping out can be as easy as shopping for the food pantries while shopping for your family. Even just an item or two can make a difference. And while both food pantries endeavor to make donations as convenient as possible, including new weekend drop-off hours at Moraine Township, the city also has food pantry collection bins located in the lobbies of City Hall and the Public Service Center at 1150 Half Day Road. Many thanks to the Public Works Department for coordinating the food drive and deliveries to each food pantry. Visit cityhpil.com backslash food- hyphen pantries for more detailed information about the food drive and services available from Moraine Township, West Deerfield Township, and the Northern Illinois Food Bank. Importantly, Highland Park also stands shoulder to shoulder with our immigrant neighbors. In this uncertain and frankly frightening time, strong allies matter more than ever, which is why it's so important for us as a council to say unequivocally tonight and every day, everyone deserves to feel safe in Highland Park. This means that, one, when you call 911 in Highland Park, first responders will never ask your immigration status. Highland Park Police, Fire, and Public Works are here for everyone. Highland Park Police, this is second, Highland Park Police do not participate in or assist with immigration enforcement. This provision of the Illinois Trust Act ensures that local law enforcement can remain focused on its mission of serving local communities and keeping residents and businesses safe, regardless of immigration status. If you need emergency help, Highland Park first responders will never be accompanied by federal immigration enforcement officials and will not investigate your immigration status unless required to do so by law, which would be only pursuant to a judicial order. Fourth, city services and those of our sister governments serving Highland Park are available to everyone, regardless of immigration status. Your immigration status is private. Fifth, Highland Park only allows the use of city-owned property for the intended purpose as defined in city code. This includes but is not limited to immigration enforcement activities. Those are not part of the city's purpose. As it pertains to immigration enforcement under this policy, city-owned property cannot be used as a staging area, processing location, or operations base for immigration enforcement. These uses would violate city code and would be subject to fine or possible imprisonment. Additionally, the city complies with the Illinois Trust Act at all times. Sixth, the city will continue to work with partner organizations like the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic that are deeply engaged in protecting immigrants' rights. We continue to ask questions and learn about how we can be the most helpful as a local government at this time. We understand that one of the most critical things we can do is to provide know-your-rights information. And to that end, we encourage everyone to visit cityhpil.com backslash knowyourrights to learn more and to access valuable resources to better understand what's happening in our area, to learn how to support our neighbors, and to identify steps that immigrants can take to protect themselves and their families, and as well to serve as allies to our neighbors. Like communities throughout the Chicago area and across the country, we are facing an unprecedented challenge that threatens the physical safety and economic security of many of our neighbors. I can say this, and I know you all will agree, we have successfully weathered challenges before, and we've done that by uniting behind the values that bind us together as neighbors: that the diversity of our community only enhances the richness of our quality of life, that every person deserves to be treated with dignity and respect, and that we all share the collective responsibility to care for each other. In the words of the great Chicago poet Gwendolyn Brooks, whose poetry speaks to us with renewed clarity and purpose during these challenging times, quote, "We are each other's harvest. We are each other's business. We are each other's magnitude and bond." Most importantly, friends, we are each other's neighbors. So let's do what we can to support each other as one Highland Park. Lastly, I'd like to announce, as many of you know, tomorrow's Veterans Day, and we'd like to invite everyone to join us at The Moraine, which used to be called the Highland Park Country Club, for the city's annual Veterans Day ceremony. And for those of you wondering why it's not at the library, the library is under construction. The program will begin at 11:00 a.m. It is presented in partnership with the American Legion Post 145, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 4737, and Jewish War Veterans Post 29. The program will include recognition of a local hero among us, remarks from special guests, and a performance by the Highland Park High School Brass Quintet along with student vocalists. Please join us in celebrating the service of our neighbors at this very special event. We'd also like to encourage everyone to pause to view the Remembrance Table, which you passed in the lobby of City Hall. This special display honors missing or captured service members. Each item on the table, from the candle to the red rose to the lemon, has a special meaning. Please take a moment on your way out to view the display and to read the information about each symbol. May we always stand in solidarity with our U.S. service members and with their families. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Mark Nolan Hill, who will share information about the most recent Chicago Veteran Honor Flight. Welcome, Dr. Mark.
How does that work? You just press. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Dr. Mark Hill, a Navy veteran, and I'm honored to present the highlights of this year's Veterans Honor Flight. And I appreciate that Mayor Rotaring and the councils support our veterans. I wish to thank two of my superior officers, Colonel Brian Danelowicz and Major Tom Bear, who has often been involved in the Veterans Honor Flight for attending. Thank you, officers. Thank you. Personally, my father and his brother, as well as my mother's 13 siblings who were male, were all in World War II, and my father's Army cover is here next to me. Please excuse me if I speak fast, as I wish to respect the allotted time limit. This was in October 15th. 113 veterans, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam War, from Illinois, Indiana, and Iowa. This began in 2008. 330,000 veterans thus far. Chicago is the largest hub, but again, we cover from Illinois, Indiana, and Iowa. In 2016, we included Korean War. 2019, we included Vietnam War. There will be more that will be included in the future. There's a waiting list of several years, and all expenses are paid. It's a long day, from 3:30 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., midway to Washington, and back to Midway. I have a medical crew, myself and 13 nurses. There's seven busloads and drivers, hundreds of volunteers, and 1,500 hours of manpower per flight. And the way you tell everyone who they are is by the color of their polo shirt. We saw all the memorials. The one at the bottom, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier and Changing of the Guard Ceremony. I've never seen that in person, and I will give you some pictures of that. Because of the government shutdown, some of these venues were closed, but we got permission to visit them. This is my medical crew, 15, excuse me, 13 nurses, and we took care of the veterans. This is Wayne Mesmer. You may know him. He sings the national anthems for the sports teams, and he's always, he's a veteran, always on Honor Flights. Everyone, even the medical crew, are assigned to veterans because there's a lot of veterans, and Washington, D.C. is a big place. And these are the two veterans that were assigned to me, Gary and Gary, both Vietnam veterans. This is the Air Force Memorial, and it was built in 2007. Interestingly, if it would have been built prior to 9/11, the planes that crashed into the Pentagon would have clipped the top of them. This is another picture. This is the Washington Monument. This is the World War II Memorial. Lincoln Memorial is behind us. 113 veterans. There they are again. That's myself and one of the veterans. Mayor, that is not a beer that I'm holding. It is a soda. People always ask me, they say, watch Forrest Gump. They say, in front of the Washington Monument, is there really water? And I just show this because there really is true. The movie was true. This is the Korean War Memorial. This is the Vietnam Wall. Gary, who was a Vietnam veteran and was in combat in Vietnam, lost two of his friends. This is Arlington Cemetery, and it is huge. Over 400,000 people are buried there, and you can be buried there if you die in war or you fully retire. This is the Unknown Soldier, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And this was started after World War I by Britain and France, and the United States joined in afterwards. And a Chicago Army veteran, actually, chose who would be in the tomb. This is called a sentinel, called part of the Old Guard, the Army 3rd United States Infantry Regiment. There's no rank insignia to avoid outranking the Unknown Soldier. There are 600 members, including now seven women, which I think is just great. This Sentinel walks 21 steps, stops for 21 seconds, turns around, walks another 21 seconds, 21 steps, and that represents a 21-gun salute, which is the highest military honor. This is the Changing of the Guard, and this is a relief commander and the tomb sergeant. The tomb sergeant is the only one with a sidearm, and he is inspecting with white gloves the rifle of the commander. And those of you who know your ordinance, it used to be the Springfield 1903, then it was the Grand M1, and now it's the Springfield M14. They do not salute anyone. Even if the President of the United States went into this area, they would not be saluted. You're not allowed to eat, drink, stand, or talk during the ceremony. And if you approach at all, it's a federal offense, and they can use force. This is playing taps for the family who is burying one of their loved ones. That's the wreath. Another picture of the wreath. When we got home to Midway, there are multiple groups supporting the veterans. I'm biased. That's Navy, and the veterans really appreciate this. Finally, on the way from Washington back to Midway, there's a mail call. And understandably, all the veterans love a mail call, and we enlist volunteers to write multiple individual letters to all of the veterans on the flight, and they really appreciate it. And my wife, Carol Sue, who is here now, is an officer of DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution, and they participate greatly in writing these letters. Thank you, Carol Sue. Finally, these may be a little bit out of order. This is last week at our annual Lake County Medical Reserve Corps meeting. There was a superb presentation by The Veteran's Path to Hope. And several days ago, I attended the opening of an additional resource center for the veterans in Grayslake. And the executive director, Laura France, and I don't know if she's here. Oh, hello, Laura. Thank you for coming. There, she is cutting the ribbon. And we had a flyover with WGN, and they showed it on the news. This is the group of people who came, and the fire trucks put a flag up on the fire truck, and it was just wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Dr. Mark, and thank you for your service, and thank you for your assistance with the veterans, and we'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's it for the report of the mayor. Is there any business from the council?
No.
Hearing none, we'll go to business from city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few reports on behalf of staff. First, we received formal notice from the North Shore Mosquito Abatement District to annex the former South Lake Mosquito Abatement District territory. The South Lake Mosquito Abatement District, I don't know if we can go to that next slide, is a separate unit of government than the city, although we have been in communication with their board members, as well as their contractor, Clark, as they currently provide mosquito abatement services to Highland Park and for other area communities. We have had discussions at a committee of the whole meeting. We've also talked to the North Shore Mosquito Abatement District about the services that they provide and the anticipated taxpayer savings, as well as overall government efficiency as a result of the annexation. South Lake is voting on the proposed annexation at their board meeting this evening. North Shore will consider a vote on the proposed annexation this Thursday, November 13th, at 7:00 o'clock at their office in Northfield. And then, if approved, the North Shore Mosquito Abatement District will assume all mosquito abatement operations, administrative functions, assets, and responsibilities. North Shore and South Lake will communicate to all the taxpayers in Highland Park and the surrounding area that they serve, but we wanted to provide this information for public information, as we've been providing regular updates to the public at these meetings.
So I just want, are you done with that?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to confirm that there is no way that the funds that we taxpayers have paid into this unit of government will revert to Lake County, but instead will either come back to the communities or automatically be applied towards our costs through our North Shore Mosquito Abatement District?
Well, through their actions, all the assets and liabilities will be assumed by North Shore, and then North Shore will be providing reports of the service they provide to the whole service territory, and then Highland Park specifically. They do have a comprehensive website, so in terms of service to our community, individual service and information is on their website, and then they'll also provide that in reporting. But to you-
So my understanding from, as we were getting into this, that because of economies of scale, it was costing less to participate in North Shore. So if we have put in the funds and not all of those funds are needed to cover us with our services, where are the extra funds going?
Well, that's a good question for North Shore. Correct. Right. So this is not a vote of this unit body by any means, but-
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but we represent the taxpayers of Highland Park-
Correct. Right. So-
-who have paid into this unit of government.
Yeah, they will be providing all that information in terms of, especially even the total assets that South Lake has. North Shore will be responsible for them, and they'll provide an accounting for them and a report back to South Lake, as well as to the taxpayers.
Great. I just want to make sure that funds from Highland Park are being used for services in Highland Park and not elsewhere.
Well, I can't answer that affirmatively, again.
But we can ask the question.
Yes, we can ask the question. Yes. Yes. They will be responsible for an accounting of it. That is 100% sure. But dollar for dollar, I'm not exactly sure, and I don't want to say it affirmatively, because, yeah, we're not in that little detail.
Yeah, no, if you could just ask the question, I just want to make sure that we're getting what we've paid for.
Yes, absolutely.
And we're not covering other communities, because, you know, they have their own dollars.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Want to provide just information that there are eight items on the omnibus agenda. All include detailed staff reports. All are recommended for approval. One item, just to bring to your attention, is number six. This is an amendment to our agreement with Tyler Technology, specifically for our permitting and licensing system. The descriptive in the title is a third amendment, although this is a misnomer. We've actually had a couple of small amendments to our agreement with Tyler, so we're just recommending to approve the amendment to our agreement, not necessarily the third amendment.
Okay.
And then, if we go to the next slide, and, next, included in the packet is a staff report regarding our new water billing system. So in the first quarter, we are going to be implementing a new water billing system to align with our overall new enterprise system. The upgraded system includes a redesigned water bill and a secure, user-friendly online customer portal that allows residents to view billing history, track water usage, and manage account details. During the transition, there will be a brief period when online payments are unavailable. During this time, customers can pay by cash or check, but we are not going to apply any late fees. We're not going to do any shut-offs during that time, understanding that there is a disruption. The new portal will replace the current payment system. It will also replace the new water use program, consolidating everything into kind of like a one-stop shop, if you will. So we are going to be communicating through every mode of communication available to us to share this information with the public. That web address that you see there on the website will take the users to information about the water billing system. Our timeline is going to be sometime in the first quarter, but again, more information to follow on water bills, eNews, Highlander, and other modes of communication.
Are we using inserts in the paper water bills that people are receiving in December?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, and electronically as well. Yes. And then the third report, I just want to introduce Austin Knight. He's a Sustainability Manager. Also want to recognize media supervisors, Ashley Palvitska, as well as Aaron Jason. Austin is going to be providing an update on our greenhouse gas inventory and reductions.
Great. Good evening. All right. The city's sustainability, okay, the city's sustainability plan sets a bold goal to reduce greenhouse gases, GHG emissions, by 45% from the baseline by 2030, and reach net zero carbon emissions by 2035. When these goals were presented to City Council in 2023, it was acknowledged that they were aggressive and purposely aspirational, in particular as it relates to the net zero emissions by 2035. Tonight, I'm going to briefly take you through where we are at, how we got there, and what the next steps are. The city set a baseline for GHG in 2018. Since then, we have seen the reduction of 77.851,000 metric tons. This represents a 15% reduction from the baseline through 2023. Complete reporting data for 2024 is not available. What you see marked as 2024 indicates a partial response, which will be completed in 2026. So how have we achieved the 15%? So how have we achieved the 15% reduction since 2018? Sustainability is a responsibility of all city staff members. On the screen are some of the most recent actions that the city has undergone to reduce GHG emissions. In my role, I lead an internal staff group with representatives from all departments that meet to discuss folding in sustainable actions on current and future progress, current and future projects across the organization. Some examples of this are reviewing the ability to increase the city's EV fleet with the Police Department, Public Works, and Fire Department, through understanding vehicle replacement schedules and what the equipment is, and what equipment is available in the marketplace that meets our needs, and working with community development in regards to EV designation, and securing and utilizing grants associated with stretch code policy and education. As we know, in order to reach our reduction goal, it will take more than actions by the city. All members of the community are needed to assist in reducing GHG emissions. On the screen are some of the most recent actions that members of the community, including government partners, residents, and business operators, have taken to reduce Highland Park's GHG number. Community efforts can be as simple as recycling unused clothes and shoes as part of the textiles recycling program, to installation of solar panels by the park and school districts, to participating in composting like the Blue Glass Restaurant. The return of the Green Alliance provides opportunities for all government partners to work together on important sustainability initiatives and support future projects such as the installation of geothermal heat pumps by District 112. Additionally, the Sustainability Advisory Group produces educational events and distributes information throughout the year. For example, every Sunday, there is a Sustainability Sunday post on Facebook. This slide represents a reduction of approximately 6% year over year to get us to the goal of 45% reduction by 2030. While this will not be easy to achieve, we know from the data where we need to apply our focus for further reduction. Based on the data gathered specific to Highland Park, the largest contributors to greenhouse gas emissions in the community is stationary energy, which totals 61%. Stationary energy is natural gas and electricity combined. The next largest contributor to emissions is transportation, which falls at 34%. In response to this information, our focus should be on mitigating emissions from these sectors. The primary focus should be increasing efficiency. The most direct way of combating stationary energy initially is through the electrification of homes. This is in line with the city's current exploration of stretch code policy regulations. In terms of next steps, a major project for staff is creating pathways that consider opportunities to reduce both the city's and the larger community's impacts year over year in the focus areas. The plan includes elements of education, investment, and policy. City staff have already begun identifying opportunity pathways and actions to further work towards achieving the 45% reduction by 2030. We will continue working with SAG and the Green Alliance to identify other opportunities in line with sustainability plan and future climate action plan. Staff will present a climate action plan in 2026 at a committee of the whole meeting, providing council with recommendations on identified pathways and options to directly address the main contributors to the city's GHG emissions: electricity, natural gas, and transportation. That is all.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Five years, we got to get going, so.
Yes.
Education will be key, and I see you, hang on one second. Much appreciated, Austin, and I think the data is super important in terms of really providing a good illustration of where we've been, what we can do, and how we can move this forward, so, thank you. I know Councilmember Ross had comments she wanted to share, and then I'll call in Councilwoman Burtapiya.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. The city is doing really great work, reducing its contributions to greenhouse gases and doing its part to combat climate change, and I really want to applaud the city staff and our council for their keen focus on this. My question, I guess I want to bring up construction work of all kinds. The construction industry is one of the biggest contributors to climate change in the world, contributing around 40% or more of global carbon emissions because of the use of concrete, iron, steel, and aluminum, but the profession is working to address that. And coincidentally, very coincidentally, last night, I attended a panel for the Chicago Architecture Biennial, where an old design school classmate brought together firms from around the world working on actionable solutions to the greenhouse gas problem and sustainable construction-ish, including advanced planning for reuse of materials and use of materials with low embodied carbon. Embodied carbon is carbon emissions associated with construction from extracting raw material all the way to the manufacturing and end-of-life disposal. I am not suggesting, and I think I just, well, I wrote this out and I erased something that I was going to write, I am suggesting that we, that when we hire architects, that we consider putting in place some green standards where we ask architecture design firms that the city interviews to aim for earning a LEED rating on the city building that they will be designing. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, or, and/or, we ask, or rather, and, we ask what their track record is during the interview process, that that becomes standard for our interviews. They don't necessarily have to earn a LEED rating, but they can design a project, they can design where every decision is made using a green lens, which will add up to sustainable energy savings and be very helpful in addressing green, GHG. And my hope is that neighboring cities, neighboring cities will see what we do, and we can promote what we do, and that they'll follow our example, and we'd create a domino effect and seriously address GHG and climate change. And based on the great work the city is already doing in this area, I feel confident that we can do that. So that's, I guess, my request, that when we're hiring, it's such a huge source of GHG construction, that, that I think, you know, given how serious we are about addressing it, it's something we can, a really important impactful thing we can do.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually already do it. I think when we added environmental sustainability as one of our top priorities, that became a priority for pretty much everything that we do, and so, so the recent architects that we hired, that was, I could share with you the interview questions that we asked, not necessarily, well, we wanted to see their experience in this area, not necessarily that our buildings would be LEED certified, but could certainly meet the metrics for LEED certification.
Right.
Absolutely.
And I would love to see the...
Absolutely.
...questions and, you know, their proven track record in this area. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burtapiya.
Yeah, I know that you're going to dive into the details you already have, and, you know, when the time comes, you're going to give us a detailed report, but just now, from your professional experience and what you're seeing, what gives you the greatest cause for optimism, and what worries you the most?
I'd say in terms of optimism, we do have, at the state level, a lot of support for that area, and at the local level, we have a lot of residents that are very passionate about sustainability and very educated, so that definitely helps in terms of reaching our, our goals. And I guess, yeah, I think, I think that's what gives me optimism. I prefer to see a glass half-full, so that's what gives me most optimism, is we have residents that are very passionate and understanding, and we have a state that's passing legislation that's going to help us get there from the utility side.
Any worries?
There is some federal worries, of course, that always occurs, but I'm optimistic that we are, as a community, are strong enough to weather that and come out better for it.
Okay, thank you.
Could I add to that? We've seen like a reduction, for example, in solar panel applications, to actually put solar panels on your, on your homes, right now, since the federal incentives went away. However, the, we are still receiving applications, and the applications we're receiving, we consider better solar projects because they include the battery saver, which we were not seeing before. So we see that even in the face of not getting incentives to do this work, people are still doing it, and they're doing it smarter and better, and better longevity for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, one, one more comment.
Sure.
I, I was not aware, I wouldn't have said all of this if, if I had been aware of the process that you use in interviewing, and I would like to ask that, that you could, you could share that when, when you're looking to hire another architect, or, you know, it would, it would just be nice to, to have that information available.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, City Manager Nukir, and thank you, Austin. Appreciate your insights and your great report, much appreciated. Assistant to the City Manager Palbitzka, if you could please introduce the next item on our agenda, which is business from the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is business from the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on a topic that is within the city's purview and jurisdiction, but is not listed in another location on the agenda. If you would like to speak about a matter that is listed on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called, and we will give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on the Omnibus Consent Agenda, please let us know if you would like us to remove that matter from the consolidated list so that you can speak about it. Please be aware that business from the public is not intended to be a forum for open dialogue or engagement with members of the city council. Rather, it is intended as an opportunity to make comments to the city council. Please do not expect a response from anyone tonight. If appropriate, questions may be directed to the city manager or other city staff. All comments should be directed to the city council. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. We request that speakers refrain from throwing objects or using noise makers, and that the public not applaud or make other comments after any speaker. We ask that everyone be respectful, civil, and non-repetitive.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard this evening? If so, please approach the podium, and we'll ask you to share your name for the record. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Ken Temkin, a resident of Highland Park. Friday morning, October 31st, I read Mayor Roderick and the City Council's statement concerning DHS ICE activity in Chicagoland. I'm thankful that Highland Park may finally be engaging in this topic. Along with the mayor's statement, a page on the city's website now features Know Your Rights information and links to various support organizations. All good stuff. But while nearby communities have taken speedy and proactive actions, I am disappointed that this first engagement by Highland Park is such a tepid effort. The statement spent far more time encouraging delay over action. It implied that Highland Park's hands are tied because we cannot act before we first listen, understand, and support. With over 3,000 Chicago-area residents already rounded up, we are long past the listening and understanding stages, and many of us are already supporting. That very Friday afternoon in nearby Evanston, federal agents staged an auto accident by brake-checking a woman who was following too closely. Rather than treating it like the auto accident it was, the agents tore her out of her car and tackled her. When bystanders protested, an agent threw one man to the ground, fist pounded his head repeatedly, and dangerously pressed on the man's neck. Other protesting bystanders were pepper sprayed, assaulted, and had a gun pointed at them. Until now, Highland Park has been largely spared the direct turmoil afflicting many of our neighboring communities. But does anyone really believe that Highland Park's already traumatized immigrant population will remain immune from DHS ICE actions if we just, as the statement suggests, give ourselves time to deliberate? When all we can offer is the equivalent of thoughts and prayers, we are failing. The time to act is now. So what can we do? As the age-old adage goes, there is strength in numbers. Why are we not working with and learning from the growing list of Chicagoland towns already fighting this tyranny? Evanston is already on its second or third revision of its protocols. Even the tiny brave city of North Chicago, a community far less endowed than Highland Park, has been leading the way. Why are we so far behind? I call on the mayor and the city council to join hands with our neighboring Chicagoland communities and learn from what they're doing, and implement by whatever means a solid condemnation of DHS ICE and a menu of actions to limit DHS ICE activity in our community. We must act now.
Thank you. And by the way, I heard some new information from the mayor's statement earlier that's positive, and I appreciate that, but I think there needs to be more two-way communication between our government leaders and the public.
Thanks, Mr. Temkin. I do want to answer some of the statements that you made, and I appreciate your concern, and as we've indicated in a number of ways, this is a point of concern for everybody up here and everybody who works at the city. This wasn't our first foray into speaking on behalf of our immigrant community, and perhaps you're familiar with the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic, which we founded in 2015, and that was at the beginning of the first Trump administration. It was because we were hearing about actions being taken against undocumented residents. And you'll note that when we speak, we speak about residents, not citizens, because everybody here is part of this community. That North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic has been providing outreach for years, and as this activity ramped up, Know Your Rights workshops had already been occurring for several years, How to Be an Ally has been provided on their website, and we've been providing outreach to many language parts of our community, not just one, because so many people have been impacted. But importantly also, I want you to know, every person sitting up here meets every year, and we discuss what we stand for as a community, and that comes out in our values statement, it comes out in our mission statement, it comes out in our statements about being a welcoming, accessible, and inclusive community, and it isn't just a, hey, this just happened, let's hop on. This is who we are, this is who we've been for several years. That's not to diminish the concern that everybody in this room, and frankly, I think most people in this community have, for how do we protect people in our community? How do we make sure that if this does come, when this does come, people are being protected? We know that our police are firmly in support of the Illinois Trust Act, which, as you know, provides police services to people regardless of immigrant status, and I talked about that this evening. We also know that our police, several years ago, I, chief, was it 2018 that you came up with the shared principles of community policing, to talk about how every single person is treated with dignity and respect and protected, and de facto is taken care of regardless of their status. So this isn't new for us. I recognize that several of our peer communities have been making proclamations and passing resolutions and saying that these are laws that we're going to create ice-free zones. Let's be completely honest, what we, as Highland Park, did in terms of saying that city-owned property cannot be used for immigration purposes fits under the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution, which is the no common deering portion of the Constitution. There's also the supremacy clause, unfortunately, which does allow the federal government to take things over. So we're working that fine line of where can we make those protections? Where does the federal government have more preemption over us than we are able to put into place? And I hope I'm not getting too legal-ish, and I know a few lawyers are in here, and feel free to check me if I'm screwing up, but the bottom line is this, we want to make sure that people are protected in a way that people are protected. We don't want to just say, this is an ice-free zone, you're good to go. Just like for you and I, when we were growing up, there were nuclear-free zones, right? How did we know if there was any kind of Nike missile under that ground? No idea. I understand the premise. We want to let our community know we are here for you. We want our community to be safe. We want this behavior, this nasty, cruel behavior, to no longer continue, and it's performative, it solves nothing. I have to say, though, as the mayor and on behalf of my council, this isn't new for us. This is who we've been for many, many years. We have taken action for many, many years, and you may not realize that we've been in touch with our immigrant community for several years, talking about what are your rights, what's the requirement and so forth, but that has been a priority for us. So I appreciate you coming this evening and sharing your concern, and I hope I'm not talking too much about this, but I really feel very strongly about this subject matter, and I want to be clear, for everybody who's here, this is who we are in Highland Park. And one last thing, after that horrific incident on July 4th, 2022, we immediately reached out to those members of our community who weren't documented to make sure that they received the medical care that they needed and were afraid to pursue, that they received legal... legal counsel, which they should have been able to access but were afraid to pursue. Everyone that is in this community is a resident who is under our care and our protection. So thank you for raising your points, I really appreciate you coming this evening. Hi.
Hi. Mark Gilholy, Highland Park.
Thanks, Mark.
So I had written a letter or two to the mayor and Gita, and it is incumbent upon me to bring it forward to everybody in the staff and council so that it's part of the record. So this was the middle letter, and I received response from Gita and Nancy, which was perfect. And I want to thank you for your care and concern acknowledgement, which they gave to me. Unfortunately, my emotions and thoughts are wasted until they create actionable solutions by the leader and administrations of our community to whom I speak. I don't have that power, but you do. We all know the important role immigrants and immigration plays in our national and local economies. These are team members, these team members work hard together to keep our businesses and thus our communities at full strength and growing annually. Simply mentally scanning our flourishing Highland Park, Hywood community frameworks, you can quickly appreciate the role these human beings play each and every day. Without their support and diligence, we would not prosper. As a community leaders, you're tasked with maintaining and improving our communities. You can't do that without their commitment to this city. Don't lose or, at worst, put at risk this valuable asset. Our partners cannot fight for themselves, they need you and the community's support to protect what they help us to achieve. Please act now to give them the utmost protection that's possible. They need to stay viable and active partners in our growth. I know you care, but will you act more forcefully to help them now? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to be heard this evening?
Hello, everyone. My name is Janet Garcia, and I've lived in Highland Park for 42 years. I confess, it's not been my habit to come to city council meetings. In fact, I was in attendance only one other time, and that was to support my next-door neighbor. But today, I'm here out of concern for the neighbors that I may not know as well, namely the immigrants who live in our neighborhoods, work in our businesses, and whose children attend our schools. Those neighbors, as I'm sure you are aware, are now in the crosshairs of the federal government's Operation Midway Blitz. It's my strong belief that we, as a city, as a community, should be doing all we can to protest the sometimes unconstitutional and brutal manner in which this mass deportation campaign has been unfolding. And we cannot hesitate to act out of fear of possible retribution. We must not be silent in the face of such reprehensible behavior by government agents. To be quiet only gives them license to continue down that road and worse. We shouldn't fool ourselves, militarized federal immigration agents will head to our streets sooner or later. I believe that will happen whether or not we, quote, "keep our heads down" in an effort to avoid provoking the ire of those in charge of the deportation effort. History tells us that to be silent in the face of such injustice and violation of civil liberties only gives autocrats license to do worse and makes it even harder to then stop an escalation of horrors. I'm here today because I had some opinions of what more our city government could do to provide leadership, and we already discussed that, not ordinance, whatever we call it.
Administrative order about the use of city property for staging operations.
The equivalent of a no ice-free zone without calling it that, without all the hoopla, so that's good. But I had another idea here that I actually discussed with the mayor today. This is the city's resolution, I wanted to advance an idea that was put in place by Evanston City Government. That city's resolution assigned the local police department an official role in documenting encounters between federal immigration authorities and our local residents, workers, and our visitors. Should Highland Park follow suit, it would mean that if our police are summoned to the scene of an immigration enforcement action by concerned citizens or residents, the policy would direct the police official to gather evidence and statements from witnesses. Further, the responding officer should he or she arrive timely enough to the scene would also attempt to secure information from federal government agents with an aim to record agents' names and their employing government entity. Under such a system, should the police department's evidence gathering about an incident reveal potential criminal, civil, or human rights violations on the part of federal personnel, the city would then refer those matters to the appropriate local or state government entities for further investigation and possible adjudication. It seems to me that such a policy wherein our local police department plays a more visible supportive role would help in the quest to make our immigration agents more accountable, knowing that the local police on the side of wrongfully treated detainees just might eventually make those carrying out and those directing immigration suites through life before they engage in egregious and possibly illegal behavior.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Thank you so much, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for your time today. You and I had a good conversation. And as I mentioned during that conversation, I currently serve as the chair of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, which is the city of Chicago and the 274 cities around the city of Chicago. I'm the chair of that organization. And last week, I organized a webinar with the Illinois Attorney General's Office, Greg Smith from L. Rod Friedman, which is our corporation counsel, representatives from the Illinois Police Chiefs Association, former mayor Lori Lightfoot, who has created the ICE Accountability Project, and former federal judge Ruben Castillo, who is running the Governor's Commission, also focusing on gathering evidence of illegal activity. And to Mr. Temkin's point, I just wanted to note, over 100 municipalities participated in this webinar. So we are all talking to one another and looking for what are our rights, what are our responsibilities, what are our options in the face of this unbelievable threat to our communities? There's a better word than that. But I just want to let you know, you know, we are all sharing what we feel are the best ways to move forward in terms of protecting our residents. Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard? Please come for, come on up, let's make a line, and you guys can all speak, come on forward. Appreciate you coming this evening. I'm sorry, Councilmember Tapia, you wanted to say something like 10 minutes ago? You want to wait till the end? Okay.
Ken Kuttula, Highland Park. I was, I'd just like to offer a suggestion. If there is ICE activity in Highland Park, if alert can go out, because we might, I think as residents, we'd like to support the community and our action, and by action, by alerting ourselves, we can participate in a protest, if you will, a legal and safe protest, but nevertheless, to counter the ICE activity would be here in Highland Park. And I think we've, I've gotten warnings in the past, I don't know if it was text or email, from Highland Park, either police activity or something that was going on. And I think it might also serve us well if we had that for ICE, as ICE might intervene in the business of Highland Park. And the last thing I want to say or mention is Green Bay resurfacing. And I haven't heard anything about it for some time now, and...
Now you're speaking my language.
So if there's anything that, any new information, even if it's a delay, I'd like to know what's going on, so, thank you.
Thank you. So I will assure you that the First Amendment is alive and well in Highland Park, and so that I am counting on my neighbors. I know that the Illinois Coalition for Immigrants and Refugee Rights is working on rapid responses, and so that is a good group to be in touch with. Concerning Green Bay Road, I believe it's the 2028 that we are, yeah, so get out of it, no, I'm just kidding. 2028 is when the resurfacing is occurring, because we were trying to give some breathing room for our businesses after everything that had happened downtown, just to kind of move forward. We've been doing all kinds of road resurfacing, what are we, $34 million next year?
Forty.
Forty million in capital improvements, but Green Bay Road will be in 2028.
You know, I noticed that some of those improvements seem to be, you're planning for traffic to divert.
To be going elsewhere.
So I saw St. John's, I heard St. John's was resurfaced, you already did the downtown, and so I guess you're getting ready to do that for that.
That also was because Ravinia has a shortened season, and those roads needed to be repaired around Ravinia, and given that they're doing their own construction, we figured this would be a great time to kind of go in and clean all of that up as well. Thank you for coming this evening.
My name is Justin John, and this is Matthew Joss. We're both, actually, residents of Des Plaines. We're here today because we're the new owners of the Shell Gas Station on Green Bay at first. So we just kind of wanted to introduce ourselves and kind of explain what we want to do there, to kind of bring it up to Highland Park standards. It's currently kind of run down, I'm sure you guys have noticed. We just took it over on September 12th, and we're already in the works of kind of cleaning it up and making it better. And some of the things that we want to do is getting new pumps, adding lighting, do a facade upgrade, and a little bit of stuff inside. And we're spending a significant amount of money there just to kind of get this stuff going, anywhere between roughly, what we're at right now is about $250,000, $300,000 to kind of get it going. So we did talk with Cory and Jamie from the village about what kind of assistance we could get, maybe, and they told us about the grant, facade upgrade grant. And we do want to kind of work with that with them, and we're moving forward with that. But we would like to ask the village if there's any way that you guys can help us with any, bringing in anything else, like any other revenue-generating stuff, like a liquor license or gaming or stuff like that. We did hear from them that currently it's not in the ordinance, but we'd like to work with one of the council members to kind of show you guys what we could do there, what we're planning on doing, because we'd like to kind of upgrade the place fully from what it is today. So kind of, we just wanted to talk with somebody and meet them out there and kind of show them, and that was the main thing that we wanted to do, that's why we're here today. And I do appreciate the, all the support from everybody here about the whole immigrant stuff. Both of us are also immigrants, just trying to make a change. So like, I noticed a lot of people coming up and talking about that, so really appreciate that, and we need all the help we can right now.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So appreciate you coming this evening, so appreciate you choosing Highland Park to have your business. Aside from that whole electric vehicle thing, I think we'll still be very much supportive of what you are bringing to the community. I don't see gaming coming anytime soon, and we are always open to discuss liquor licenses. I pass it to the city manager if you have any suggestions of who they should be in touch with.
Well, I just want to echo, welcome to Highland Park. It's an excellent community, we're glad you're here. So we'll follow up with you under separate cover. I know you've been working with our staff team, and we'll guide you through all the licensing permit procedures, look at investment that you want to make into the property and see where we can help. As the mayor indicated, there are some initiatives, if they're not currently available, we can certainly explore them with the city council. Some policy questions have been asked and answered, but we'll answer all your questions and guide you through the process.
Absolutely, welcome, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to be heard this evening on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, well, so appreciate everybody coming out, and you're welcome to stick around, we've got fun things to talk about. Now I will call on Councilmember Tapia, who I think wants you all to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to all the very important heartfelt and justice-driven words of concern. You know, as a member who of culturally and ethnically of one of the communities that is most affected by all this, you know, obviously, as city council members and with the mayor, we have the responsibilities to protect our residents and our visitors and the people that work here in many ways that you've articulated, in the ways that the mayor has spoken on our behalf. And we have to be vigilant, and, you know, it's important for you to keep us accountable to that, and you see things that maybe might be outside our peripheral vision. But there's also things that many of us see, and we all have different connections to different nonprofit organizations and religious organizations and legal organizations, as the mayor discussed. And there is a lot of energy out there with small organizations that are doing immigrant protections, that they are doing the kinds of vigilance and pursuit that, and warnings, advanced warning systems that the city in some ways cannot get involved in. But there is a lot, if you're looking for ways to get involved and support, I know for a fact that there's organizations that need resources and money and support and advocates and legal representation and pro bono work. I mean, marketing and help and communication help and getting the word out to the media and fine whistles. I mean, there's a lot out there that is beyond the purview of the city, but that, you know, we see the need there, and I encourage you that if you haven't done it yet, with all this energy and passion you have for seeing justice and protection, we'll keep doing our job, we'll keep rising up to the moment. But there's a lot of opportunities and a lot of need out there that needs people like you to step up and connect.
Great, thank you so much for those comments, really appreciate it. Continuing on with our agenda, under the omnibus, we have items one through eight grouped together for omnibus consideration. I know councilmembers Ross and Littler wanted to say something about item five.
I have four, first.
You had four?
Yeah. I just have a quick question for the city manager on item four. I realize it's just we're repealing the old, or the old contract and putting in the new one, and it seems that there's an 18% price increase. My question is, is that the only change to the agreement? Because it wasn't like anything was redlined or highlighted, and I didn't see anything else, but that's quite a hefty price increase, and so I wanted to know if that's why it was renegotiated, number one, and number two, if there's anything else.
Yes, so the price increase was the bid received, so that's not what the change was. When the USIC's legal counsel changed, as we were going through the contract or the approval process, the city council approved it, and then when the contracts went back and forth, their new legal counsel was not okay with the indemnification language, and they worked with our legal counsel to work that out, but nothing price-wise changed.
Perfect. That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
And then number five, I just had a question with regard to the pedestrian bridge. Thank you, Ron, sorry to bring you back right up and turns on his heel. My question is, I very much want to move forward with the state's support about the memorandum of understanding, but I just want to make sure that we are not, by agreeing to this, in any way committing the city to putting forward the entire, either $10 million or by the time this gets done, $12 million to fix this. I just want to make sure there's no financial commitment to move forward beyond wanting the state to hold on to the $2 million grant that's going to go toward that.
Yes, there is no financial commitment with this. This is strictly that memorandum that would say that before the city would proceed with a demolition, that they would review it historically and record it as a historic, possibly a historic bridge before the demolition would occur. But it does not, it does not require us to move forward with the work.
It doesn't bind us to move forward, but this is a critical step to ensure that we just preserve the right to use those grant funds, and then in terms of...
Should we move forward?
Should we move forward? And then the next step, correct. And then the next step is coming before the city council and committee, the whole, to bring forth options for, we're assessing maintenance of the bridge, what would that cost be like, how much life will that give us of the bridge, or to look at a policy of, you know, redevelopment, reconstruction, which again, right now is looking at $10 million, of which too would be grant-funded. We're also exploring some other possible grant opportunities and pursuing all options in that regard.
Perfect, thank you very much.
I was going to ask, if it's historic, can we get historic funds for this ancient pedestrian bridge?
To preserve it.
To preserve it and to rebuild it.
Yes, I mean, yes, the way it's, the way it's written is that the city will agree, in this particular case, Mayor, just to have it reviewed and recorded in the state historical preservation log or something thereabouts. And it says before demolition would occur. So it's even by the memorandum, it's really more of a procedural item before we would move forward. But as the city manager said, without this step, we cannot move forward, so at this point, yeah. But I don't believe there's any historical money available to...
For that bridge.
Ultimately, for the demolition.
Don't leave the podium, because I know Councilmember Ross has a question for you regarding five.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I encourage everybody to try to, if you haven't already, to walk or bike the bridge. It's in really bad shape, the concrete is separating, there's exposed steel, and I think that just from a life safety standpoint, this has to be a high priority to do this project, and so I was happy to see it on the agenda. If the determination by structural engineers is that the... I, if, if the, if the determination by structural engineers is that the, the bridge isn't salvageable, that a new bridge needs to be built, it, it seems imperative that it be built, the new bridge be built and finished before the old bridge is torn down. There could be delays due to funding issues, material and labor issues, state government bureaucracy. You need to, we need to maintain that access over the highway at all times. Otherwise, we'll have a really dangerous situation with, a different, a different dangerous situation with pedestrians and cyclists trying to cross the highway. And we simply cannot lose pedestrian access at any point, especially with the Solo Cup site project with, you know, potentially 227 townhomes and maybe up to 1,000 more people needing to use that bridge. So that, I just wanted to make sure, make two points. One was that the, the bridge is clearly in bad shape. Something needs to be done. And if, if the ultimate decision is that it has to be replaced, it has to, you, you can't lose access to the, the old bridge until the new bridge is finished.
Yeah, I, sorry. I, I would say that, so the bridge does get inspected. So we were required to do that like all of our bridges. So it, you know, it gets a rating, so it's meeting the requirements. We recognize that it's in, you know, declining shape, which is why it was proposed as a, as a, as a project. Right now, there is no, the, the new bridge goes right where the old bridge is at. So it would be demolition and then building the new one in generally the same location.
Well-
Because you have the lead up ramps.
I understand, but we should seriously look at another possibility, which is, because I, I think it would be terrible to, to be without that access east over the highway. So you could, in theory, in theory, design it so that it's, you know, side by side.
So a quick question for you, and I don't know who, I'm sure somebody's got an inventory of bridges over 41. But as I'm thinking about the drive literally from Zion down to Chicago, are there other pedestrian only bridges? Like we have bridges at Lake Hook Road and at Clavy. We have a not great crossing at Park Avenue and then further up at Half Day. But thinking of that whole stretch of highway, does any other community have a pedestrian only bridge that goes over the highway? It's a, I, I don't expect you to have the answer tonight, but I'm kind of thinking maybe there isn't one. And if it's 10 to 12 million dollars, what are other communities doing to get people across the highway? So I think that's a question worth asking as we move forward on this.
Yes, mayor. Yeah, I don't have the answer to that, but very good question. Right now, budget estimate, $10 million, $2 million in ITF funding, so $8 million.
Which we already have been granted, so absolutely we should see what we can do, but-
We also want to find out how many people are using this bridge because there are people really dependent on it, at least that I've heard from, so.
Okay.
Mayor, we will be bringing this back to a committee of the hall meeting.
Appreciate it. Great. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on this consent agenda? Nope. Okay. So I'm seeking a motion to approve items one through eight. I'm sorry, and six is going to be, because we need to note this, a resolution approving an amendment to the Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Contract between the City of Highland Park and Tyler Technologies, Inc. of Plano, Texas. So now I'm seeking that motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on items one through eight? Any from the public? Harry, none? Will the clerk call the vote?
Council member Center?
Aye.
Council member Brookman?
Aye.
Council member Ross?
Aye.
Council member Tapia?
Aye.
Council member Littler?
Aye.
Council member Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Seven ayes, none ayes. Items one through eight have been approved. We have several items under other business. And item A is a public hearing related to the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget for the City of Highland Park, a home rural municipality, county of lakes, state of Illinois. Pursuant to chapter 65 of the Illinois compiled statutes and chapter 31 of the Highland Park Code, I hereby call to order the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 proposed city budget. Pursuant to statute and ordinance, notice of this public hearing was published October 30th, 2025 in the Highland Park News. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council member Center?
Present.
Council member Brookman?
Here.
Council member Ross?
Here.
Council member Tapia?
Present.
Council member Littler?
Here.
Council member Bloomberg?
Here.
Mayor Roderick?
Here. We have Coram and I declare the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 budget open. I will now turn the public hearing over to city manager Gita Newkirk and finance director Kristi McAlu for the budget presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, mayor, council members. So we do have a short PowerPoint presentation. Nothing that we present this evening is going to be new to you because we have been talking about the budget for about nine months now as we prepare for fiscal year 26. If we can go to that next slide. First, really before we dive in, I just do want to recognize finance director Kristi McAlu, as well as our deputy finance director Laura Lou Kasek, our entire senior staff team, our entire finance team and everyone in the organization. So what we indicate as city staff is fiscal stability and financial responsibility is everybody's responsibility in our organization. Regardless of your position, you have an opportunity to make a difference in the city's fiscal health, whether we're looking at opportunities to generate revenue, to save costs, operate more efficiently. That's something that's really everybody's responsibility. And our staff does an exceptional, exceptional job in that regard. And just special thanks and appreciation to Kristi and our entire senior staff team for their leadership in that regard. Also want to give special appreciation to the mayor and the city council. The policy that you set is sound. It is for the best interest of the community. We have one-on-one meetings together where we are, you know, deep diving into the budget document. And we are confident that the proposed budget reflects your policy interests collectively as a city council and certainly reflects the feedback from the public as well as our staff. So this is everything that we are going to highlight as part of the short presentation. The next item is the schedule. So we start the budget process in the spring and it really takes us all year. As we sit here right now, we are actually already working on the 27 budget in our work plan. But you can see, and this budget schedule is on our website as well. But we have neighborhood meetings every spring where the mayor and I meet along with our government partners to talk about, not necessarily the budget, but really anything city aspect. And so we are inviting feedback from the public in terms of our programs, services and initiatives. We have a number of different budget workshops throughout the year. And staff is working, you know, in and out of all these public meetings on the budget development process. We go to the next. So one of the first things we do as part of the budget development is we take a look at the mission of the city. This is the foundation of which we are operating as a unit of government. And so the mission that is identified there is reviewed with the mayor and city council at a spring workshop. And so that is going to be guiding us in the next fiscal year. And then we also review our priorities. So we did add the priority of vibrancy starting in fiscal year 26. And so you can see the PowerPoint that's, that's shown here, that red bubble, which I know it's hard to read, but that identifies each aspect of our major priorities. And so when we take a look at new initiatives, programs, services, one of the first questions that we ask ourselves is, does it align with our mission and priorities? And that's kind of the first basic question to see, is, is it something that we should be considering for the city? We are presenting a balanced operating budget, which means that our operating revenues are exceeding our expenditures. So we say that proudly because it is not easy to do, especially for governments during this time of life. Our revenue is generally flat at 100 million. And then, as we noted earlier, we've got 40 million in capital projects, which is 6 million more than we're doing this year. And so that impacts our infrastructure, facilities, equipment. We have a comprehensive review of our capital plan for this year on our website. And again, we'll be building that for next year. But overall, people can see the details of the capital plan that's reflected in this budget on our website. And then Kristi will take us through the rest.
And now to the numbers. Good evening, mayor and city council. It's an honor to discuss the proposed 2026 budget to you all this evening. Here for the proposed revenue, we have, the charts on the top are showing the total revenue city trend and the total operating revenue. 2026 operating revenue, as Gita just mentioned, is expected to be 100 million dollars budgeted, which is relatively flat with the 2025 operating revenue. With 2025's operating revenue expected to be about 2% higher than last year. Operating revenue does exclude, as noted at the bottom of this slide, it excludes debt proceeds, debt tax increment financing levies, which is TIF levies. It excludes asset sales, capital related grants, reimbursements and most transfers between funds, is what operating revenue does not include. The total revenue for 2026 is proposed at 150 million dollars, which is expected to be 24% higher than 25, with 2025 expected to be 6% lower than 24. The charts at the bottom of this page show city revenue by fund and by revenue source to show our source diversification. This tells us where the proposed revenues come from and what they will be used for. The diversification of revenue sources really demonstrates the city's goal in maintaining a diversified revenue source in order to ensure the effective costs, efficient cost to city services to be as low as possible for the property taxpayer. Charges for services, property, sales and other taxes make up 65% of the city's revenue. The general fund, water and sewer funds and street capital funds account for 74% of total revenue. Some of the revenue assumptions for 2026 include these things listed on this chart. Each budget year, the city staff reviews fees and taxes to ensure they are fair and comparable with other communities in our area and that they support a high level of service. The budget includes changes for property taxes, water and sewer rates and other smaller fees that were discussed during the September 8th budget workshop or subsequently recommended by city council. The city's property tax levy is approximately 8% of a residence tax bill. And the city's water rate can, does continue to be one of the lowest in the Chicagoland area. In addition to operating impacts, total revenue is impacted by non-operating revenue. Changes which are, which includes on the right over there, transfer between funds, changes in capital grants or reimbursements and debt financing that is consistent with the city's 10-year capital improvement plan. The 2025 property tax levy proposal, which will also be discussed at the November 24th council meeting, is, we call it the 2025 property tax levy and it's collected in 2026. This shows that the city and the library portions of a residence tax bill are currently 7.7 cents and 2.5 cents per dollar respectively. The largest portion of the city's 7.7 cents pays for a public safety. The proposed combined city and library 2025 levy is 8.3% higher than the 2024 combined tax levy extension. This includes the city levy of 19.8 million dollars, which is 7.9% higher than the 24 tax extension, and a library levy of 6.4 million dollars, which is 9.5% higher than the 24 tax extension. The tax levy includes 21 million dollars combined for the city and the library aggregate levy and 5.4 million dollars for the debt service levy. Debt service levy as a percentage of compared to last year is significantly higher due to the planned debt issuance of 24 million dollars in 2026 for capital projects. The total combined increase is approximately 138 dollars for a city taxpayer based on an average EAV of 500,000 dollars. Okay, on to 2026 proposed expenses or expenditures. The proposed expenditures are totaling 142 million dollars and are 4% higher than the prior year. 71% of these expenses are dedicated to public safety and public works, services. Given the most significant portion of the city's expenditures is for provisions of services to residents, there are 57% of these expenditures are due to personnel costs and contractual services. 28% of the expenses are dedicated to capital improvements and the remainder is for debt service, transfer between funds and other costs. The assumptions that we came to conclusion for the 2026 expenditures are an operating budget increase of 2% compared to 2025, even though, you know, inflationary pressures have increased the prices of goods and services. And as the tariffs come, we, you know, staying at 2% is an accomplishment. This includes a staffing budget of 273.6 full-time equivalent employees, which is 1.3 higher than 2025. And the changes in staffing, it reflects our approach to high level of service and to have the high level of service in the most efficient and effective manner. It is consistent with the compensation plan, collective bargaining agreements and anticipated higher insurance costs. Capital improvements, as we previously mentioned, are estimated to be 40 million dollars. We've got 34 million dollars for streets. It's listed here on the screen, capital, forestry, sewer upgrades and 6 million for facility improvements and fleet and equipment replacement. For 2026, capital funding because of the debt service planned is expected to be 65% pay as you go and 35% debt financing. Continued assumptions include contractual services and materials of 33 million that are about 2% lower than this prior year. And we have the debt service expenditures of 10 million are 43% higher due to prior year because of our planned debt issuance and previously issued debt. Transfers of 7.7 million for capital and dispatch costs. And the budget does include 9.5 million dollars being funded for public safety pensions and 617,000 dollars funded for the city's IMRF pension and IR, for those IMRF employees. Okay, we have expected fund balance at the end of 2026, if everything goes according to plan, at about 67 million dollars, with the general fund being about 28 million dollars. Let's see, the proposed total net fund balance is an increase of 8 million dollars. But what that is, is that's driven by issuing 24 million dollars of debt, but then drawdowns for, in other funds for capital projects, drawdowns in general fund, multimodal, the water fund and sewer fund. All approved by city council for the, for the capital improvement plan. All right. So next steps we have on, at the next city council meeting on November 24th, we will, the council will consider the 2026 budget and we will be holding a public hearing for the tax levy on December 15th. The city council will consider the tax levy for adoption. So that concludes the presentation for the 2026 proposed budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
I have a handful of questions. And first I just want to say thank you because as Gita mentioned, as the city manager mentioned, we have been at this for the majority of the year and just want to thank you for the great work that you and your team have done. You talked about how revenue is anticipated to be 24% higher than 2024, but the main purpose is due to the issuance of debt. But then the vast majority of our capital improvements are both 65% pay as you go and then 35% from the debt.
Yeah. Yeah.
So 65% actually is a drawdown from the reserve?
From other funds.
And from other funds, okay. And we know that we have sort of limitations in terms of how much we can draw down from each of the funds.
Yes, and with those drawdowns, we still are within the fund balance target, projecting 10 years out.
Which is amazing, and I think you guys, I don't even remember what percentage we're at, I think our target is 35 and we're...
For the general fund, 35%.
Right.
This target.
I think I heard you correctly say that in the personnel costs, you were accounting for the increase in healthcare costs. We've heard about how healthcare costs are exponentially rising, and I just want to make sure that we're accounting for those rises in healthcare costs for personnel, and it sounds like...
Yes, we are.
We are. Thank you. And then also the library with their increase, which is folded into our tax levy, so to speak, even though they're a separate line item, but they're not in...
Right, we levy taxes on their behalf.
We levy taxes together, those are also primarily personnel costs, as I remember, or is there...
Yes, yeah, personnel and their debt service, just because this year in 2025, we issued $4 million of debt for their construction.
On behalf of the expansion that they're working, okay, terrific, great. One last question, and that is, I don't remember seeing in the capital improvement pieces, was there any mention of lead line replacement, or is that not yet started?
Well, part of, I'm gonna see what, so I know this is a revenue assumption, so I know it says $31 million of new debt, 7.9 million of that is for the IEPA-assumed lead service line.
Lead line replacement, okay.
Loan.
Great, okay. And do you remember, or maybe Ron knows, what's the deadline for replacing those lead service lines?
Well, this is a multi-year schedule, so we've got it over four years.
And I understand that, I just kind of wanted to figure out where we are in the scheme of all of that.
Mayor, I'll have to check, at one point it was like 2047, but it's moved around. So they have been reducing it, they started off with a largely time, it depended on how many services you had and what percentage you'd have to complete each year, depending on the size of your town. So, but they have been, the legislation has been creeping that back, that we're gonna have to get done sooner.
Right.
So, I mean, initially, we were looking at hopefully five years for us to be done, which is well ahead of that schedule, but as funding has not been available, we'll have to, we'll have to see that. So our first round of funding or project will probably take two years just to get through about six to seven hundred service lines, and we probably have another 1,000 or so after that to do.
Okay, and it's from the main to the meter that's on us, and then the meter to the house is on the resident, but we're helping people with the...
That is correct, Mayor. We have a program in place, we have a policy that addresses all the scenarios, but if you're within the project area, the specific project area where the IP fund, IEPA funding is, is being used right now, it's a $5,000 charge for the property owner, and that is if we're doing any private side work from the meter pit into the house.
Okay.
Otherwise, the city, if it's on the public side, that's, of course, the city's doing that, yes. And then we also have provisions in our, in our policy, if you're not outside of those project areas and you're like, hey, I don't want to wait, I want to do it myself, we have a, like a, like a cost share, so you can get some reimbursement for, for your portion, if you go out on your own to do the work.
Do we have any intelligence that, I understand it's the Illinois EPA, but granted, those funds come from the federal EPA, is there any likelihood that those dollars are going to disappear on us?
I will say that the funding that the, that Illinois has at this point, it's usually in the rear, so they'll receive it and then they distribute it slowly, so I think for right now, I know for sure we're, we're eligible, or we have up to $10 million for this first, first phase. We won't, we won't need the whole 10, just for the size that we're in, but at this point, I know this first phase is good.
Okay.
I know there are some concerns, but we continue to apply, and as the rules change on the, at the Illinois level, we adjust our application process to meet those new requirements.
Great, thank you, thank you. Any other questions, Councilmember Center?
Yeah, thank you, great job, appreciate it, I know a lot of work went into this. Can you just speak to how you thought through the impact of drawdowns, debt, cap backs to our Moody's rating as we look forward?
Yeah, we, I would say, as long as we realize the revenue that we are projecting, we should be going on our Moody's rating. The, you know, the fund balance drawdowns for the capital projects in specific funds that we are looking at, we definitely worked within the constraints of making sure that we're not going below fund balance set targets, not even just for '26, but looking 10 years out. So, you know, ebb and flow, it depends what actuals come in at, but I feel good about our capital and our planned revenue sources as far as the, you know, maintaining the Moody's rating.
We have parameters, we know how much that we, the max we should draw down, we know the max of debt percentage to total, so we do kind of have those back-of-the-envelope sort of metrics that we follow.
And are we monitoring that fairly actively throughout the year so that we can adjust on the fly as needed?
Yeah, well, and a lot of it deals with planned debt, right? So that's usually not on the fly.
That's very funny.
Fair enough, but as it relates to revenue generation, that maybe it's...
But if we have a big chunk where we know we're, you know, gonna be below budgeted revenue, that would definitely need to be something we take a look at and possibly pull back on planned projects that haven't been started yet.
A great example would be during the pandemic, when we scaled back on our capital projects because we knew that we were going to need funds for other purposes, we were like, this is going to get too close, so we're just going to move stuff to a future year, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Great, any other questions? Councilmember Bruckman?
Thank you, just a comment, I just want to thank you for again, you know, giving us all this information for our one-on-one meetings, taking the time to really answer all of our questions throughout the last nine-plus months, so thank you. And also, again, great job with, you know, continuing to make sure our budget is fiscally, fiscally responsible and really going through all of our information and projects, and thank you, that's all I would like to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? You've stuck around this long. Great, okay, I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Rotting?
Aye, seven ayes, no nays, the public hearing is now closed. Any individuals who were unable to attend this evening's public hearing may submit written comments to the attention of the city finance director. The city council will consider an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2026 annual budget and related items at our next meeting, which is November 24th, 2025. All right, we're going to continue on with our agenda items. Item B is a public hearing related to an ordinance amending a special use permit for a planned development at 445 Central Avenue. And pursuant to Chapter 65 of the Illinois compiled statutes and Chapter 31 of the Highland Park Code, I hereby call to order the public hearing on the proposed amendment to a special use permit for a planned development at 445 Central. Pursuant to statute and ordinance, notice of this public hearing was published October 24th, 2025, in the Lake County News-Sun. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Center?
Present.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Here.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Tapia?
Present.
Councilmember Littlewer?
Here.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Here.
Mayor Rotting?
Here, we have a quorum. I declare this public hearing on this proposed amendment to a special use permit at 445 Central open. I will now turn the public hearing over to City Manager Gita Newkirk and Director of Community Development, Joel Fontaine.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just do a short presentation on this amendment to a special use permit, as you had indicated, for the planned development at 445 Central Avenue. Staff recommend council open the public hearing, as you have, take testimony, consider and discuss the ordinance amending the special use permit for a planned development at 445 Central, and consider the related amendment to the development agreement. This is, this represents an amended application. The applicant has submitted a revised proposed amendment requesting to include the use of one of three instead of two of three ground floor tenant spaces for something other than restaurant or retail, as was required by approvals. Specifically, that Suite 100 tenant space, that's about 3,200 square feet, be allowed to be used for medical office use, and the two other ground floor tenant spaces continue to be limited to restaurant and retail uses. There is a request for a modification as well, associated with that new use of the medical office space, a relief of additional five spaces of off-street parking to allow eight instead of 38 required off-street parking spaces. This will allow the land use, the medical office land use in Suite 100 as proposed. There's a donation and a commitment terms in this, this approval packet. The applicant proposes a $250,000 donation to the city to be used for economic development initiatives related to potential sales tax revenue, to the loss of potential sales tax revenue. There's a change in the approval documents before you tonight that I want to highlight here, a change to Section 4 Amendment to strike the above, as you could see struck out, and to replace with the following. The developer must obtain temporary certificates of occupancy for the restaurant or retail use of the remaining two spaces on the ground floor of the building no later than December 31st, 2027. Of course, the other tenant space will be filled with a medical office space under this approval packet. There's a picture of the handsome building and the vacant first floor that we are trying to fill. Staff recommend the council open the public hearing, take testimony, and consider and discuss the ordinance amending the special use permit for this planned development and the related amendment to the development agreement. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Director Fontaine. Are there any questions or comments from the city council?
Councilmember Littlewer?
I would like to hear both from the applicant or from city staff as to what types of guarantees we have that leases will be moved up and that this will really be in progress during the 2026 year.
Well, we'll certainly stay in communication with Mr. Cannel and his representatives, will provide updates to the city council. Mr. Cannel, I don't know if you want to talk about your process for leasing the balance of the property, I know there's been some interest already for the site, and so we look forward to working with the prospective tenants.
I'm Scott Cannel, and obviously, I developed this property and have been a Highland Park resident since 1987, I think. Anyways, I am actively looking at two different scenarios now where the space next to this space 200 would be a restaurant owned by me, by my family, and we are talking with two different parties that are both in the same business, the high-end cake business, one that's, that's based in Indianapolis, outside of Indianapolis, and one that's here about bringing that into the third space, hopefully, or something along those lines, because I think that'd be a really successful business in this community and something, I mean, these cakes are beyond phenomenal from either place and not like anything you can buy in the Chicagoland area. So that's our hope, we're already working on it now, and I think we're going to make a lot of progress, you know, by summer of next year. So, this is something that's on the top of our radar screen, so you have my promise that it's something I'm going to do.
Great.
And obviously, you have my financial commitment on the other side as well.
So I wanted to thank you very much for, you know, stepping forward with regard to the financial commitment to our economic development as a town. I think that's really important, and it does show your good faith. I also would like to ask if in fact you see any potential restaurateurs or anything for the other space?
Well, I think what we want to do, that middle space is, is actually develop it ourselves, bring in an absolutely top-flight chef, and what we're going to try to do is kind of skin the cat two ways, okay? So we're going to try, my hope is that we're going to be able at least a few days a week during the lunchtime to run the program I always wanted to run for developmentally-disabled kids, but then at four o'clock and on to have a world-class restaurant there for the city. So that's what we're going to try to do. It's very hard to deal with a lot of these big restaurant groups, I'm, I have, I'm opening up a couple of restaurants, or working on opening up a couple of restaurants in Northern California as well, and what I found is the best way is to go find the chef, operator, and make them a, an equity partner, and just give them the backing and go, and I think that's how we're going to get the best possible product. But we're, so we certainly would encourage referrals from the city in that respect.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Center?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks again for coming and for, you know, collaborating on a solution that we hope to make work for everybody. Excited to, you know, support the doctor, I know she's got a great plan in place. I want to go a step further than Councilmember Littlewer, just for a second. The timing concerns me a lot, and I, and I recognize that you're trying to curate something very specific, but the time to lease retail, maybe restaurants a little bit challenge, more challenging, but retailer, restaurant in suburban areas like Highland Park right now is far shorter than two years. I've seen anywhere from one month to six months for areas like what we're talking about, which is prime real estate. So, say a little bit more, like why are we waiting two years?
Well, not necessarily, you're waiting till I get it done, but I'm, what's happening here is the, the middle space, the reason I spent $12 million to build this building was to get this restaurant space, so I'm going out, I'm going to get my chef, I'm going to build that restaurant space, I'm going to invest millions more dollars in this city in that space, and it may take me two years to fully build out the vision of what I have, at which point you're going to have a really phenomenal restaurant for, which will hopefully last forever for the remainder of my life. The other space, we're going to lease as quickly as we possibly can, and we've already, you know, made our contacts there, so hopefully the other space can be up and running, you know, within a year or less, you know, hopefully with, you know, maybe by fall of next year, if we can, if we can actually enter into a lease in the next couple of months. But it's just the center space that we're talking about.
Right, but it isn't like the center space has just been vacant for a day, it's been quite a long time, right?
The center space has been vacant for a very long time, but there are a lot of personal reasons why, as we're trying to figure out what to do with my daughter and her situation, and now we're trying to kind of split the baby, whereby we, we make the investment and dive in and have the restaurant, but also have something that, that hopefully gives her some things to do as well.
I guess what I'm out, maybe what I'm getting to a little bit, Scott, is, is there a way for there to be something measurable to show actual progress, whether that's in the form of tours, LOIs, draft leases, at interim dates, that gives us the guarantee that we're actually making a concerted effort to, to execute on the plan that is in front of us?
Well, I mean, you have my commitment that I'm going to do it, and I'm going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to get to that point, so.
I'd love to hear maybe if other council members have thoughts on my line of questioning, thanks.
Absolutely. Councilmember Bloomberg?
So, first of all, Dr. Leffert, Inc., I, I welcome you to the community. I'm sorry you've had to go through this, other colleagues here have expressed similar sentiments, nothing I have said before, or I'm about to say, have anything to do with you, and I, I really am excited for you to be there. Frankly, when you discuss your personal commitment, we have two contracts signed by you when you decided to build this building, upon which the city founded its trust in you, to put something else in the space. So when you say we can trust you because you have your word on it and you've made a financial commitment, how is that different from what went before? I'm not going to vote in favor of this, as, for the reasons that I previously stated, and I won't reiterate all of them here today. If anybody wants to review that, it's available as a matter of public record. I understand my colleagues' decision, I support them, there's been a lot of pressure to get this space filled, and I, I fully understand that. I, I'm going to exercise restraint and say no more in that regard. I hope that we are able to get what we are hoping to get in the remaining spaces, but for those reasons, I, I'm not going to be able to vote in favor of this tonight. We did make a commitment to Dr. Leffert, Inc., and I think as a council, because we made that commitment publicly, we should support that, and you had a majority of, of my colleagues vote in favor of that, I anticipate they still will, but I'm not comfortable with this. But I'm not comfortable with this.
Well, Councilman Bloomberg, you've never supported any of my projects, including this one, from the beginning. But the fact of the matter is, if you look at the economics, I've put enormous amount of money into this community for a return that no one else would do. I did this project as a public service, okay? I'm sorry. I apologize that I didn't get this done. I've had, you do not know what I have faced, okay, and what my daughter has faced personally, particularly since COVID. Had it not been for COVID, I believe that this project would have gotten done. But it completely flipped everything on its head, and we're now just reaching a personal equilibrium where we can move forward. So you have my word that I'm going to move forward. I am going to move forward. I'm going to invest very substantial resources. I'm making this my, my central base, my home. I've made a massive investment in the building, and I'm going to make it work. Okay? And I'm going to make it work, and I'm going to make it work for the entire community in a way that no third party would do, because no third party would take the risk and make the investment that I'm going to make. I'm doing that because this has always been my community. I could live anywhere. I've chosen to live here, in part because of people like Meryl Roderick and the things that she's done for the city for years and years and years, and how wonderful it's become. So, you know, I'm going to get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Cannel. Councilmember Bruckman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that this request still troubles me deeply. Just from our last meeting, you had acknowledged that you, Archibald and Hogsaw looked at the spaces and shown interest in the space, but we chose, you chose not to pursue it for multiple reasons.
Well, they actually, they haven't. They backed away.
Okay, because I had heard, I had heard afterwards from multiple residents that they were very interested in Highland Park. The city and our residents have lived up to our end of the deal, and you have not as of yet. With that, with that said, I respect this particular tenant wanting to put down roots here, and that's something that we definitely need more of. But our responsibility is to the broader community. So with that, I have two questions and two concerns I would like clarified. My first question is if the tenant, if you were to leave, I know you're signing a long lease, does the variance automatically revert back to the original condition that I would be back to a retailer or restaurant, or would it now be a medical office?
Not the way it's written right now.
It would not. This is, this is allowing, the way that the restriction worked in the first place is what the initial occupancy was. And that's how we, that's how we handle all of ours. We, we don't have a restrictive covenant for permanent use. We have initial use. And what the original deal was is that all three spaces were to be initially used. The initial occupancy would be retail. We made an exception that this initial occupancy could be this medical use. So if this goes away, the, then the underlying zoning would apply.
Okay. It would revert back then.
If this doesn't.
No, not necessarily. It would revert back to any use that would be allowed in the underlying district. Oh, I'm sorry. We added the provision, I stand corrected. We actually added a provision. If we did not have Section 5, it would, it would revert back to the, to the underlying use. What we added, at the request of the council, and we definitely put, I drafted this provision in, it now provides that if this use goes away, the restriction of retail or restaurant would be reinstated. Thank you for that reminder.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And then just my second comment on this, and Councilman Center kind of made that comment about if we could put something, and I don't know if this would be from the city that would be able to do this, some type of matrix or something to see what types of restaurants or retail would be coming to. I know you had mentioned what type that you were looking at, just so we kind of have an idea what you're looking at, like as we move forward here, so we know what's coming, whether it's six months, a year, just so we have more assurances in place on our end. So with that, thank you again, and I am, I will be approving the lease for the medical offices. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a quick question for you. I know you talked about having a high-end restaurant, and I mentioned to you in prior meetings that we have been approached by at least five restaurants who were interested in the space. Do you want us to circle back with you and your team on those names, or do you have people in mind?
No, I mean, we have some people in mind, but circle back with us on the names, and it depends upon the, you know, what ends up being the net ownership. If it ends up being 50-50 or 51-49 for us, then we would be interested in doing it.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you. Councilmember Tapia.
Yeah, I'm going to be supportive of this, but I want to just say why. Obviously, it's been a very difficult journey, but here we are. And, and, you know, you've offered a way out, and I think there's some skepticism here. But as I said last time, you know, this is about, you know, risk management. And one way to manage the risk is to, you know, keep putting restrictions or keep trying to get guarantees. There might be some good ideas here to sort of get some, some markers in place, which I would be supportive of, just to get a sense that things are moving forward without declaring what they should be. I think any process, right, of finding a restaurant or, or some retail or some business, you know, you know, I'm in business, right? You always have a pipeline, and the pipeline, you look at the health of the pipeline, you see what's in the pipeline, and you know that some, many things will not work out, and that's why you have more and more things in the pipeline. So I worry a little bit about your response to the mayor's offer to say, hey, we have these five, six names we passed, and then you're feeling kind of good about the names that you're working with, but that sounds like a very narrow pipeline. You know, if you have two or three, that's not as good as having six or seven or eight, because we know that things don't work out, you know, the way we would like. So I worry about just that you're taking a risk on so few chances.
Well, I mean, man, what I'm doing is something that's quite extraordinary. And I'm doing a parallel thing in Northern California right now, which is I'm building the restaurant. I already own the property. I'm building the restaurant. I can take zero net rent coming in to me, okay? So I essentially own a piece of this business, and I find the right super chef, and we go from there. Obviously, if it's in partnership with a group that has done it before, that perhaps increases the odds of success, but it also creates a situation where Highland Park is not necessarily getting something that's unique. So, you know, there is a give and take in that, but obviously, I'm willing to talk to all comers and, and see.
So you're making the case that you are coming up with an alternative approach that is not usually done, but you believe that.
It's not done because it's not economical, okay? What I think council's failing to see here is that it is this private property. I could leave it all blank, okay? I'm choosing not to leave it all blank. I'm bringing in Dr. Leffert, Inc., who between her and me, we're going to invest, I don't know, a million, two or a million, four in that space. And I'm saying I'm probably going to invest another million and a half, two million dollars in the remaining spaces. I don't know what type of economic return I'm going to get off of them. I don't think it's going to be that great. You know, if it's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, I think that'd be fabulous. But I'm doing it because I told Mayor Roderick years ago that I would do it, and I'm going to get it done. You know, this is my hometown. I don't want to have that smudge my reputation, so I'm going to get it done.
Yeah. So just final comment. I'm going to support this because I feel that ultimately, for the good of the community, for, you know, there is a building that you own that, you know, our best bet right now is to have you follow through on what you're saying. You know, Dr. Leffert, Inc.'s, you know, investment as well, it's pulled at my heart the whole time, because she's already put in the money, and I would just, you know, want to see her be successful, welcome her to community fully, see you be successful, provide for the needs for your daughter and your family, and at the same time, meet the needs of the city. So in the end, while I feel that this is still a high-risk situation, given the history, I'm going to bet on taking the risk on your good faith and believing in it and putting my weight, my vote on that. So that is what's behind my vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I am standing by my vote to move this project forward. I do like the, you know, at least the idea of the high-end bakery and the high-end chef. I am concerned for the surrounding businesses who would like to see the ground floor retail filled because it's a drag on their businesses. So, but I share my colleagues' concerns based on the past history of this site. And developer, you may have invested a lot of money in the site, but residents and businesses feel anxiety about the glaring vacancies. So the community feels it has suffered, you know, despite or as a result of this investment. But we are where we are, and I feel that the best approach that we have available to us is to move forward. And I do wish your new tenant much success, and obviously, we're, we wish you success in filling those vacancies. Can you give us regular updates on your progress, updates to the council and/or public about where things stand every few months? I wouldn't, I guess that would make me feel better to.
I have no problem coming back to council in, you know, what, say, six months or something and giving you an update, and then periodically thereafter, giving you updates. No problem with that at all.
Well, I was, yeah, six months seems a bit long. I mean, I think.
For the first one, for the first one, and then thereafter.
I mean, quarterly updates would, as, yeah.
It's just that knowing what my schedule is and the amount of time that I'm going to not be in Illinois over the next several months, it'd be easier if it's, if we do it sometime in the spring. And then by then, I should have some very concrete results.
And so then thereafter, it would be quarterly?
And thereafter, I'm happy to report to you quarterly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloomberg.
I just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Cannel said to me earlier this evening that I've never supported you. I supported this project over the other four projects that were proposed to come in for the Highland Park Movie Theater. I pushed for this. This was the project that I most wanted, and I have supported this.
Okay, then I apologize.
And I am not, I'm not saying this to argue with you. I'm saying this to clarify the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Littlewore.
I'm going to support this, but I, I'm glad you'll be willing to come back and report to us. But I wanted to ask staff at a one-year mark for a comprehensive report of everything.
Absolutely.
So that we know that, I know that you spend a lot of time out of town. I know there's projects all over the country that you're working on. I'm glad you're willing to commit to that, but I want to make sure that staff follows up and that we have a full report on an annual basis so that we are comfortable moving forward from there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience on this project? Hearing none, I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the vote? Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewore?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you all for this conversation. We will consider an ordinance amending a special use permit for a planned development at 445 Central Avenue. That's Item C under seven other business, a resolution approving a Second Amendment to the development agreement between the City of Highland Park and Alabama Associates LP. Is there a motion to approve?
As amended.
Mayor.
As amended.
Time out. Hold on.
Couple of things.
As amended.
Just want to confirm that you're looking for, your motion is for Items C and D to be voted together in an omnibus fashion. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
B was the public hearing. C, what?
Yeah, B was the public hearing, but C and D.
D is not related to this project. D is related to Dean Avenue, at least according to what I've been given.
Not on the agenda that's online.
That is on yours. This is why this new program drives me bananas. Okay, so yeah, let's take it omnibus, Item C and D.
C and D. Okay. And then remember that D, the Second Amendment, would be as amended, and that amendment was just to add the time period being its certificate of occupancy versus lease.
A lease. That's crucial.
Which we worked out and the applicant has agreed to, and I prepared a revised version.
So that's why it's as amended.
That's why, that's why D is as amended, but you can take C and D together if that's what the, your motion maker and seconder want to do. And if, then with respect to the promises that were, were made just on the floor here, your motion maker want, may want to include, we wouldn't add this to the agreement, but we would include as part of the motion that that be, that that commitment.
Reporting.
For reporting be honored and administered by the city staff.
So.
So where do we begin?
Okay, my recommendation, if you're inclined.
Do we have a motion and a second on the table?
We do.
Well, I don't know that you recognize it, Mayor.
I did not.
So I think you have a clean slate, and I think you could entertain a motion to approve Item C and then Item D as amended. And then, if I may, with an added requirement that the city staff be required to work with the applicant to have a regular recording, a reporting on the status of leasing, the first report to come six months after today's date, and then quarterly thereafter.
With a comprehensive report at one year.
And with a comprehensive report by the staff at one year.
And Mayor, the items are listed on there, the agenda.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick, quick question on that, counsel? If that report is, in our judgment as a council, non-satisfactory towards the accomplishment of the goal, will we have any ability to take action at that time?
Right.
No.
Yeah, this is just, at this point.
Without anything else, right?
Right. This is just a reporting, a good faith recording requirement. It's a good question, but that's what's on the table right now is a, is a reporting. And one other thing that I might add that wasn't discussed, and, but just my familiarity in dealing with this, the applicant may also be, just given, dealing with a public body, may be willing to report more frequently to the city staff directly, because if it's verbal reports, it wouldn't be subject to Freedom of Information Act, and they could, my experience has been applicants and leasing agents are more inclined to provide information. We could report to you in a way that, that's not completely public, in addition to the public reporting that he, that we're required.
It would be in addition to that.
Yes, for sure. In addition, I just want to try and give you more, even more comfort.
Sounds like he's not going to have.
And I think that that would be something that they would be willing to do.
So on that line, can I offer you a motion that states exactly what council just said?
And I'd like.
What he said.
And I'd like to second it.
And we'll make sure the minutes reflect that.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions on Item C and D?
Yes, I do.
Any from the public? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk call the vote, please? Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewore?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
No.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Six ayes, one nay, and Items C and D as amended have been approved. Thank you. Item E is an ordinance amending a special use permit for a planned development at 763 Dean Avenue. I don't think we need a presentation. People have done their homework. Do I have any comments or questions on Item E?
Councilmember Bloomberg.
A quick question. The lighting, I assume, is consistent with our dark skies lighting code?
It would be consistent with the original approvals. They did not make any changes, and I believe that is correct.
Okay. And the sense is that that will reasonably protect the residential neighborhood in the area?
Yes, to the extent that, yeah, those requirements are met, which they should be.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I would move to approve this.
Thank you. Councilmember Littlewore.
I had a clarification. I love from the drawings what I believe is parking along Roger Williams, but on the school's property, meaning that the parking spaces, as they're facing north, are not in the street, but actually cutting into the property so that it looks like that angle over there. I just want to ensure that Roger Williams is not being impacted from a narrowing perspective because there would be parking spaces that are parallel parking on Roger Williams, but actually it's indenting in. Is that correct?
The proposal is on their property. It's not in the right of way.
Okay.
It's not showing in the right of way, no.
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that and make sure. I just wanted to clarify that and make sure that that was noted. On that, I would love to second your motion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on E? Councilmember Ross?
I will simply say that there were a few residents who were concerned about the parking, but Dr. Lubitfeld, you know, I think gave a good explanation, and they really worked hard to work out this parking. There's, you know, more, more staff at the site, and in general, there's more staff at all of the 112 buildings as they try to create an equitable education across the district, and that it passed unanimously from PDC.
Thank you. And to that end, are there any comments or questions from the public on this item? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion. We have a second. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. Item E has been approved. Item F is consideration of a planned development and final plat for 932 and 942 Deerfield Road. Again, I'm presuming people have read the packet. Are there any comments or questions on item F?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Ross?
There were alternatives, and is there, where are we with the alternatives?
So I have, the alternatives here for council to take a look at, and we would like feedback on that, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
On the facade facing Deerfield Road?
There are three different facades.
Correct, correct.
And I do want to add that, in general, I'm not sure if it's in our requirements, but that, you know, facades facing streets should have windows to the extent possible. They shouldn't be blank walls, and that was what was attempted with, the developer tried to add windows in. I understand that, given what I remember of the plan, I tried to pull up the plans, and I couldn't find them again, but they're limited in terms of all the other interior elevations having either windows or doors or stairs, and they do need a wall where they can put bookcases and, you know, hang art. And there were other considerations as well. They put these sort of clear story, horizontal windows in, and PDC was concerned that it maybe wasn't enough, at least a couple of PDC members were, and so I think that's where these alternatives came, came from, inspired these alternatives.
That's correct. So there was quite a bit of discussion, as Councilmember Ross explained, and so the applicant did provide three sets of renderings with alternatives here. So the proposal's on the left, and the alternate is on the right. You'll notice that the center window is longer. Staff do think that that should be, at a minimum, that should be included in the design. And here are the alternatives that they've provided. So alternative one, alternative two, you'll notice you still have that same elongated window in the middle, but you also have these outlines to create some visual interest on the rest of the facade there. Alternative three is just a darker version banding on those relief features there. So you have alternative one with nothing, two highlighted, and then three with black highlighting. Firstly, I mean, from staff's perspective, I think just if you have a, the larger window in the center, I think that would be at a minimum what, what would be wanted for this facade of the building. We note that this is a four, a four-unit building, so it doesn't really require much relief, if any. It's the building form that they're looking for. It's a townhouse unit. There was a four-unit building done just down the road, not far away, that does have more windows, and so this was something that was achieved previously through design review. That building was a by right building, not a PUD building, because it was a multifamily building, but it looks very similar. This is a townhouse building, and so the difference is that there is no communicating room within the structure. They're each individual units, as buildings separate, although they are attached. The other one that was approved during the pandemic was approved, quote, "by right after design review," because it was, in fact, made into a multifamily four-unit building.
I do want to add that PDC actually did approve this without the alternate five to two, but the applicant clearly took into consideration the minority's, you know, concerns in presenting alternatives.
And there was a condition also that the forester provide final recommendation with regard to the tree selection, which, again, this is just in consideration at this phase. We will be coming back, if directed, to draft approval documents with that recommendation as part of them, unless otherwise directed.
I have one other comment, which is that if we went with one of the other alternates, say that one...
Mm-hmm, sure.
That they should, if, I mean, I don't know what they're planning for inside the ground floor and the second floor that is, you know, just a square, that maybe they want to change the siding there so that it's shingle style, something to, I really wouldn't want it to be just a plain surface. That's just a thought.
I would defer to the applicant on that, Madam Mayor.
Can I ask a question? The applicant here? Do you want, feel free to come to the podium and share your thoughts.
Excuse me.
Not sure, maybe, so as far as like those outlines, we were trying to basically, it was approved six, one, but we were trying to basically, any dissent, you know, we're not trying to cause any difficulties, or we're trying to meet all the community guidelines set forward by the commission. So actually, like in those squares, which were some of the things we came up with, those are basically solid panels, as opposed to things which are kind of more popular or like grid-like, if you've seen on newer constructions, there are more panels, as opposed to siding planks, if that makes sense. I know it may be a little bit difficult to see, but I guess if you see like where the lines are coming through on the actual siding planks, there are not so much on the panels. That's just a couple of ideas we came up with essentially to...
Break up the visual...
Exactly.
Okay. I don't think it's going to look good as a plain panel. I would put...
You'd rather see...
Different kind of siding there.
Sure, yeah, we can absolutely, you know, if, it would be a different color, like a gray, a black, something like that.
Even if it's the same color, just vary the surface.
Oh, is it like a shingle style, something like that?
Right, right.
We can absolutely do that, depending, yeah, we can absolutely do that.
May I just ask you, are the windows different? In what you proposed, they look more three-dimensional, almost like that they're, they have greater depth versus in your alternate, it looks very flat?
They're absolutely the same windows.
They're the same, okay, great.
So it might just be the shading and the rendering software or something like that.
And so when this comes back to us, will it be in one of the, I know what's proposed was before PDC?
And PDC voted five, two, actually.
But did they see the alternate?
They did not.
They did not.
Uh-huh.
This was a nice gesture, I think, by the applicant.
So thank you very much for that, because I think actually they're much improved with your alternates. So will that go back to PDC or...
No, it's not, it's not necessary to go back to PDC. With direction from council, we can go from here.
Well, then, I'd love to make a motion that we, or you can make a motion, but for...
It's a fair document. It's nothing that's requiring tonight.
Okay, well, I think these are much more interesting, even if it's a little more texture or color or...
More texture.
Shape on it. So I think, thank you very much for doing that and for listening to the PDC. It looks much more interesting.
Would false windows be a bad idea?
Trying for it to not look fake.
Because I think we did that on Green Bay Road.
I don't think we did that on Green Bay Road.
If, if I may, because I wasn't, given like the layout and stuff like that, we would actually like to enlarge some of the windows, but we're very close. So something that we differ on compared to the project that was approved about three or four buildings away, these are roughly forty, fifty percent bigger. So basically, our limitations regarding meeting all the EPA requirements in terms of energy conservation and things like that, with these windows, these are essentially, what we're proposing are essentially the highest technology that you can get in terms of windows on the market, so we're kind of limited. They're approaching essentially the same thermal performance as a insulated wall with a very high insulation factor. So if you made them any bigger, if I remember correctly off the top of my head, it's about, we're within three or four percent of the guidelines set forth, so we can't really enlarge those windows too much without providing a headache or without minimizing what we think would be a better aesthetic instead of having the front unit looking out at the street and people in to look to the side and basically have light flow through the unit, if that makes sense.
Okay. So is there a motion to prepare, to ask staff to prepare final? Why don't we just make the motion?
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second? Hello, is there a second? Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. We will see this again when final documents are prepared, and thank you both for coming and staying through this meeting. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. With that, I'm seeking a motion to go into close, yes, ma'am?
I did have one last thing that I wanted to say, and which, well, I wrote something, but I'll just remember. This is the only opportunity, or not only opportunity, but we're all together, this is a public meeting, and as opposed to trying to write everybody, I'd like to say this, but in light of the greenhouse gas presentation, which was really optimistic and, you know, exciting to think that we could come close to meeting our goals, that I would think that, that it's in keeping with, with that, you know, wonderful goal that we try to promote pedestrians walking across the city, cycling, and I, it just seems to me, in light of that goal, this is, as opposed to looking at it as, well, we're the only, you know, city in the vicinity that has this, you know, pedestrian bridge, cycling bridge. We should treasure that. We should try to preserve that east-west connection and the walkability and cyclability of the city in light of the greenhouse gas. Very worthy goal, and I just want to ensure that.
Thank you. With that, I'm seeking a motion to go into close for purposes of discussing security and purchase or lease of property.
Aye.
No, we need to, like, do a whole thing.
We're going to do a whole call. I would move to go in a closed session to discuss security and purchase or lease of property pursuant to five ILCS, 120 slash two, C8, and five respectively.
Second. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. We will now go into closed session. Thank you. Forty-five. Forty-five.